We'll call the public hearing to order. Welcome all of you here this evening. We have presentation of two tax abatements requests.
So, first tax abatement request is from Dan and Tanya Wagner. It's for Sterling, South Sterling, Lot 4, Block 1, Wagner Edition. Parcel ID number 31-3659-020. And they've provided all the necessary paperwork for approval, or consideration for approval, so it's all here. The second one that Dan and Tanya Wagner have requested is for Lot 4, Block 26, City of Worthington, address of 1111 Sixth Avenue in Worthington, parcel number 31-0239-000. And they also have provided all the required information for the abatement request. Operation Committee did review these and moved it on to the Board for consideration on tonight's agenda. Would you like me to do number three as well?
Yeah, right.
Okay. So for the item number three in the hearing, it's a request from Steve Bosma, and it's the track in East 1 of West 1 Quarter, Section 9, Township 102, Range 40 in Worthington Township. Parcel ID 20-0064-500. The address is 30521 County Road 25. And he also submitted all the required paperwork. Operation Committee did recommend for consideration at the School Board meeting this evening.
Okay, any questions from anyone? Hearing done, we will close the hearing.
Is the leak getting any full?
6:14.
Spider. That would always get to come up a little bit from that one.
Make it rain anymore than that already.
Yeah. Channel, we're gonna be in a creek coming Worthington was flooding out, banks and stuff. So, water's come up significantly since that. It's more than I can take.
We'll call the meeting to order. Let the record reflect all Board members are present except Tom Prins is absent this evening. 1.2 recognition of visitors and guests, we welcome all you here this evening. 1.3 will stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the resounding justice for all.
1.4 correspondence recognition, I received no request for public participation. 1.42 recognition of students, staff, and community. We'll have Erin recognize the Prairie staff.
So first of all, I would like to recognize the staff at Prairie Elementary that organized the Prairie Carnival on April 25th. I think the entire town showed up for this event. There were thousands of people in attendance, and kids had so much fun, and it was a great way to get parents into the schools and to see their children's learning environment. So from administrators to the teachers to the custodians, a lot of work went into that big event becoming a huge success. So, additionally, congratulations to Sharon Johnson for being recognized with the 2024 Inspirational Woman Award. The award is given to an exceptional woman in our local community who goes above and beyond in her career and in her community. So congratulations Sharon. Also, congratulations to Kelly Nips, an art teacher at Prairie for being chosen for the District Number 3 Smart Maher Veterans of Foreign Wars National Citizenship Education Teacher Award by the VFW. The award recognizes our nation's top teachers for their exceptional commitment to teaching Americanism and patriotism in their classroom. Congratulations.
Thank you Erin. We will move on to recognition of tenure teachers.
So to get this kind of organized, all those who are receiving tenure recognition, if you'd go over here and come on this side, the Board members will line up over here along with administrators, and we'll get started.
Morgan's not here.
Alex Johnson. Abby Seeler. Next we're going on to teachers from high school, Matt Gaudian.
Austin Mina.
Thank you.
Thanks Mike.
Alba Morales. Oki Collier. Now from the learning center, we have Brian Bow.
Hello, teachers from the middle school, Austin Bauer.
Beatrice Duff.
Consent agenda, we need to remove 4.7 from the consent agenda.
I move approval of both consent and main agenda with the removal of 4.7 off of the consent agenda.
Motion by Lori.
Second Steve.
Second by Steve to approve the agendas with removal of 4.7 from the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.0 approval of minutes.
I move for approval of the April School Board meeting and the committee meeting minutes.
Second. Motion by Adam, second by Matt to approve the minutes. Board meeting and the committee meetings minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The items on the consent agenda, if you approve, you're ready?
I move approval of the items under the consent agenda.
Motion by Lori.
Second.
Second by Adam to approve the items on the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor, the motion signal probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.0 main agenda, monthly financial overview. Dave?
You should have the revenues and expenditures through the end of April. So we're a little over eight tenths of the way through the school year, and fiscal year. As you can see, the revenues are running a little bit ahead at 85% compared to just under 81 last year, and the expenditures are running just under 76% compared to 79.5 from last year. There have been no major or unusual expenditures or revenues in the last month, so we're still plugging along.
Okay, any questions for Dave? Okay, hearing done, we'll move on to 5.2, approval of tax abatement resolution number one.
I move approval of tax abatement resolution number one.
Motion by Adam.
Second Steve.
Second by Steve to approve the tax abatement resolution number one. Any discussion? All those, no, roll call vote.
Ms. Dudley. Aye. Mr. Lorenz. Aye. Ms. Schutte. Aye. Mr. Bloom. Aye. Mr. Schneider. Aye. Mr. Woodboom. Aye.
Resolution passes. 5.3 approved temporary easement with the City of Worthington.
The temporary easement request from the City of Worthington is for the replacement of the walking bike path in front of Prairie Elementary. They need a little more space in relationship to the work that they'll need to do, so they've asked for that temporary easement to take place, and the Operation Committee was recommending approval.
I move approval of the temporary easement with the city.
Motion by Lori.
Second.
Second by Erin. Any discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor of the motion, signal probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.4, approved education, identity, and access management board resolution.
This resolution is in relationship where you would give me the authority to go in and approve access through the EDIM system, or as it's identified here, for individuals that have to do required reports or get information from the MDE system. So, MDE requires that you have somebody who's responsible for giving access and not. Likewise, Lisa is my backup, so she also does that authority of providing that as well, so.
I move approval.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Adam to approve the education, identity, and access management board resolution. Any discussion?
Is this something that we do every year?
No. Okay, any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Ms. Dudley. Aye. Mr. Lorenz. Aye. Ms. Schutte. Aye. Mr. Bloom. Aye. Mr. Schneider. Aye. Mr. Woodboom. Aye.
Resolution passes. 5.5 approved to declare ag textbooks as surplus property.
I'll make a motion to approve the surplus property. Second, Woodboom.
Motion by Steve, second by Matt to approve to declare ag textbooks as surplus property. Any discussion? What happens to these when you're done?
We just get rid of them. Sometimes we, another district would take them, or unfortunately, they go right in the garbage.
Okay. They're up for anybody who wants them then.
Yeah, pretty much.
Need some education, Matt. I do, yeah, I do, definitely. Yes. Okay, any discussion? Motion made and seconded. All those in favor of the motion, signal probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approved tax abatement resolution number two.
I move approval of tax abatement number two.
Okay, motion by Lori.
Second.
Second by Adam to approve the resolution number two. Any discussion? Resolution, roll call vote.
Ms. Dudley. Aye. Mr. Lorenz. Aye. Ms. Schutte. Aye. Mr. Bloom. Aye. Mr. Woodboom. Aye.
Resolution passes. 5.7 approved tax abatement resolution number three.
I move approval of resolution number three.
Second.
Motion by Adam, second by Steve to approve the resolution number three. Any discussion? All those in, no, resolution, roll call vote.
Aye. Mr. Lorenz. Aye. Ms. Schutte. Aye. Mr. Bloom. Aye. Mr. Schneider. Aye. Mr. Woodboom. Aye.
Resolution passes. 5.8 approved budget amendment.
So the budget amendment was presented by Mr. Swanson to the Operations Committee. He reviewed the amendment, and as he went through it, he pointed out various things related to the revenues and the changes in the expenditure, and the Operations Committee is recommending approval.
I move approval of the budget amendment.
Second.
Motion by Adam, second by Steve to approve the budget amendment. Was this significant, anything in it?
Not really.
Or end of the year adjustments.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.9 approved job points restructure.
So, a year ago, you approved the job points, and with that, then, the current ratings were shown on the paper. All job point ratings were reduced, and a few were adjusted based on their actual job duties. Not a great deal of movement within it, but there were a few that were adjusted because we found that they were out of line based on the job they were doing and what was there. So, in the end, what it really comes down to, the job points were tightened up and readjusted. The colored portions represent the coordinator area, which is what I call rather large groups, so there's really level one, two, and three coordinators that were there to just kind of tighten it up and get it a little more aligned. So, after discussing that, I don't remember which committee looked at it, operations.
Yeah.
They recommended approval of it.
I move approval.
I second the motion.
Motion by Steve, second by Lori to approve the job points restructure. Any discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor, signal probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.10 approved 24, 25 membership in the Minnesota State High School League.
This is an annual resolution that we do in regards to being a part of the Minnesota High School League, and the process is a little different. Now it's electronic, there's nothing to sign here, it's actually an electronic signature that happens, but every year we do the approval of being a member of the Minnesota High School League. Instructional Committee was recommending approval.
So moves, Steve.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Erin to approve the membership in the Minnesota State High School League. Any discussion?
It's a roll call.
Roll call vote.
Ms. Dudley. Aye. Mr. Lorenz. Aye. Ms. Schutte. Aye. Mr. Bloom. Aye. Mr. Schneider. Aye. Mr. Woodboom. Aye.
Resolution carries. 5.11 approved policy 533 wellness changes.
This was presented to the Instructional Committee. The wellness changes are to align for the review in the food service area that we will be having. The committee reviewed this, and they met approximately four times to make the changes, and the committee then brought it forward and went to the Instructional Committee where they're recommending approval of it.
I move approval of the changes in the wellness policy.
Motion by Lori.
Second.
Second by Steve to approve the policy 533 changes. Any further discussion?
I noticed that it's specified for kids K through 12, and given that we have an all-day preschool program, I just wondered, like, should we mention that it's for pre-K through 12, or maybe there's different standards and requirements for the four-year-olds?
I'm not sure there are different standards. It's based on the MSBA model policy is where we started.
Not every school has the pre-K. I know we do, or the four-year-old program. That's not a big significant change, so if we notice that we need to go back, we can make that without bringing the policy back to the Board, so.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signal probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.12 approved professional development travel request.
So there's a travel request for six individuals to go to a science of reading training letters. It's tied with the Southwest West Central Service Co-op, but it would provide the opportunity for us to have our own trainers, and they would travel to Chicago July 17 through the 19th, and will be utilizing some of the SIR funds for that travel. And the recommendation was for approval.
Okay, need a motion.
I make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Erin to approve the travel request for the instructors listed. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.13 approved vacation schedule changes.
So, there currently was a vacation schedule that we had, and we found that we had some concerns with the old vacation schedule, that it took quite a while to move from having 10 days of vacation to 15, and it also was becoming a little bit of impediment to hiring individuals. So it changes it so that they'd spend the first year of employment with us with 10 days of vacation, and then 2 through 6, 15 years, and 7 through 19, 20 years, is where the changes all occurred. And so, the recommendation from the committee was approval.
20 days, right?
Yeah.
Not 20 years.
20 days.
Okay. We didn't think we'd given that long of a vacation.
I move approval of the change to the vacation schedule.
Motion by Steve, second by.
Woodboom.
Woodboom. Okay, and this is. Okay, and this is slightly changed from where it was?
Yeah, the first three years. You get to 15 and 20 years much faster than on the old schedule.
Okay. Any, this went to the instructional committee?
I think it was instructional, yeah.
Can you just specify who this new change relates to?
Good question. Yeah, it would pretty much tie to all 12-month employees, with the exception of the MSBA employees, because they have a contract and it's specified in their contract. So it'd be all 12-month, other 12-month employees that aren't tied to an association.
Okay, any further questions? We have a motion and a second, correct?
Yes.
All those in favor, signal probably saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.14 approved the initial 24, 25 annual budget.
So the annual budget for 24, 25, typically, we've done this in June, but we're a little bit ahead. It has to be done a little earlier this year. It seems like they keep moving dates on us. Anyway, the operating funds total a little over $69 million, and the total of the revenue and the total of all revenues is a little over $73 million, while expenditures in the general fund are 60, just about 63 million, with total operating funds at 68 million, a little over 68 million, and total of all funds, 73,674, which in all practical purposes is a balanced budget and not building any type of fund balance or extra revenue. This was reviewed by the operations committee and they recommended approval.
Okay, any further discussion? We have a motion.
No motion, not yet. I make a motion to approve the annual budget for 2024, 25.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Adam to approve the initial 24, 25 annual budget. Any further discussion?
I should say, in my notes here, I think Mr. Swanson said that this reflects a 4.5% inflation built into the budget. I just want to make note of that. I think that's maybe higher than it has been in the past, not quite sure. So I'll make that comment.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signal probably saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Going through reports. Superintendent John?
Yeah, I have a couple things I want to make sure I highlight, referendum information. Please remember, you were provided a handbook that's also been provided to all the district employees. Likewise, then, there was a handout I laid there. It's related to the look ahead of what's being done, and I'm not going to read through them, but there's completed communication activities that was there, and then the upcoming communications. And I did just meet with a firm who does what I call multimedia-type communications that we'll be looking to utilize to get more, what I'll call Facebook and other types of communications out. I apologize for the look ahead there. You might need to dig your magnifying glasses out to read it, because I can't read it. Or maybe it's just my eyes, but there's a couple weak lookout there for you to kind of see what's coming up next. And I'll mention behind me, we have our banner that was printed up, so if you're meeting with a group, want to utilize that as well as the draft floor plans. It's meant to give people an idea of what would be changing. Please remember, that gets defined later on. But it gives the overall view and presence of what the conversation will be, depending on if the referendum passes. Secondly, I received an email from Senator Weber, and on the tax bill, the sales tax legislation that we were a part of with some other districts for reimbursement of sales tax on projects did not get included in the tax bill. So unfortunately, we won't see any reimbursement on materials. And that was about roughly $2.4 million for our district alone. Couple other quick items, just so you're aware of it. I just want to mention, the operations committee did hear the timeline on where the watershed is moving with the Krausheim property. And they looked at finished designs here in May, or get final designs by August and bid in September with a fall '24 construction to spring '25. And they had some delays with the height of the dam, so they had to do some rework on design. And then we talked administratively today on staffing needs. And right now, I will tell you, we have a huge staffing need in the special education area. So that's a huge concern of mine. And at some point, I might be asking for more authority for signing bonuses. And I did have a conversation with one of the association leadership regarding providing an incentive for those who currently work for us to switch from regular ed to special ed. But we'll see where that comes. I can't answer that at this point. And I'd prefer to do it on a voluntary basis than a reassignment basis. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, John. Any questions for John? Okay, we'll move on to instructional committee report.
Everything under the instructional committee that we discussed has been discussed or acted upon tonight. I did want to say, though, that the instructional committee has been meeting with the principals bargaining group the last couple of months, and as of this morning, we do have a settlement, and that settlement is 10.94% over two years. And there's, was just a few minor language changes. So that's the update with the principals' contract.
I probably should mention, overall, we, on the negotiation side, we have some individuals we have to finish up with. We made pretty good headway on that and on the list. The one that is still some work to do is with the MSBA groups. And they originally came in at well over 30% request. And they're now slightly over 20% in their requests. So we still have a long way to go in our conversations with them. A great deal of the language pieces are taken care of at this point, so there's not a ton of language stuff to address. Most of them have financial implications.
Okay, any more questions for John about that, or Lori? Instructional committee, any other questions?
Nope, nothing else for the instructional.
Okay, operations committee report.
We've covered everything tonight that we discussed during operations. Nothing further.
Okay. Thank you. Any other reports? Any other business? Any future business? If hearing none, we'll call the meeting adjourned.